First item on is that the Garrett Salter has submitted his resignation effective July 6th and need to authorize the pay time off hours prorated. And it comes up 216 hours will be payable from 101, 301, 705 budget line, $4,500 in $3. This is pretty much SOP in case anybody's got questions. Obviously, we can't make that motion today. That's going to be made next Tuesday, so...
Yeah, we can just review.
What is that, Laura?
Just review.
Yeah. And Sue Walker has asked for 72 hours of pay time off. And Ray has asked for...
Now, there's money in these line items.
In these line items. There's money in those items. What we don't have on here, which I forgot to mention to you, Laura, was we've got to come up with the $5,000 to pay for the GM and software. And there's no money in that item, and I couldn't find anything that we can roll over in corrections.
And nobody got with me on that.
And the sheriff's going to be... He'll be coming later.
And to just to correct, there's money in the line item currently, but these are not budgeted for. So, these line items will run in the red at the end of the year because these amounts have not been budgeted for. Yes, correct statement, there's money in the line now, but these are expenses that you don't know if they're going to happen or not. So, that's the problem with this, is that you can never predict what kind of money to put in there because you never know who's going to ask for payout.
Yep. Which is the problem with pay time off feature in the contracts, of course. That is a serious issue. Because of that, it creates also a problem on personnel on time and a half to cover when they're taking them and so forth. That needs to be looked at closely in the union negotiations.
Well, I know that the purpose of doing the pay time off was to be able to encourage people to take their time because they need that time... They need the physical away from that job to be able to refresh their brain.
But the purpose for allowing payout was, is that you're getting paid out on straight time hours versus them going on vacation and covering at time and a half.
Correct.
So, it's kind of a catch-22. It's like you're saving money by them not using their vacation, but it's hard to judge...
Well, then, you take your vacation, you're paying probably for a person's time and a half.
Correct. So, it's... yeah.
I'm glad you guys explained that.
(laughing).
The...
It's just discussion.
And here's the other one that was... That Laura and Amy did detailed research with the assistance of an attorney. Apparently, we're going to be mandated to pay the airport for part of the grant that we received to install the fuel system. The details, if you want to know, ask the staff.
The problem is, we're locked into that grant system down there. And to get out of that, we would have probably come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's going to bend that right more. We'll have to do the budget because there isn't any money about to be cut out.
That's correct. It will need to be amended.
The...
On what? Was there a amount?
Twenty-five... Was it $2500?
$8,255.
Was it $8,255?
Yep.
And we're recommending, when we send that back, that no more expenditures take place.
Yep. We want a cover letter to make certain that they don't think they're going to get... In other words, they don't divert that money to the other $25,000 that we were normally funding as a part of our assistance to the airport.
And not look at any other expansions without...
Because the other thing, a lot of that money was spent for an airplane hangar, for the hangar, as well as the fuel dump and so forth. We just don't have the option at this point in time to participate in that.
Did that fuel farm come in under budget, and so then they used the extra money for other stuff, or did that go over budget?
It went over.
And their recommendation is to only pay the amount that we contracted for and not the overages.
Correct.
Is that what you're stating on the record, Dan? Is that we're only paying what we're contracted for?
We're only paying our contractual max that we have to pay.
Somebody had to OK that. I didn't OK it.
I...
It was done in 2011, so I didn't see anything in the minutes saying it was done, but...
It could be... I don't recall.
Someone should have come and told us that it was going to be over. I didn't.
But that wasn't when... During the airport board meetings, when I... That has never been mentioned about the money being over budget. And it hasn't been mentioned once anyone's there, I'm sure.
No.
In other words, we've never picked up on that fact. The meetings are...
They're like paid to go, huh?
Yeah. It didn't make sense. Yeah. If that makes sense. Looking at the MERS conferences in September from the 24th to the 26th, that costs about $700 plus the mileage and meals and so forth. What's the estimate total?
Around a thousand every year.
Around a thousand. And I don't think that we need to spend that kind of money for that kind of an option. If we need to know anything about MERS, I'll find out.
We'll call the rep for that.
They have someone that will... Directly from MERS that will come and do the explanations.
Sure. If we need that, we'll call MERS and have them send someone.
Yep.
But over the 40 years I was with them, I attended many conferences all over the globe. And the way we rationalized it in our mind, because it cost lots of money in Honolulu and Phoenix and Boca Raton and all, and Puerto Rico and so forth, was if we got one good idea, it was worth the $10,000 we just spent for that. That works in the private sector, but it don't work so good when you're looking at a half a million dollar budget.
And somebody then coming from MERS, we're not responsible for their mileage, that kind of...
No, that's on their tab. Yeah.
I think that's an actual...
So, we don't need a budget for that, probably. And last things, we need to bring up some money for the DHS because of our mandate, actually. It's about $2,500 that we've got to fund for DHS.
For DMs.
Is that all right?
Yep. For DMs, for DMs, for your representative.
And other than the $5,000 for the GM and software, I can't think of anything else that... Oh, we got a lightning strike on one of our towers. We've got to submit a...
The sheriff's supposed to come up there.
Yeah.
Or did you have something?
I can speak on the lightning strike, but I do know the sheriff is on his way behind.
You want to speak on that?
I can.
Sunday, when the storm rolled through, we received either a direct strike and or near miss, a cause considerable damage. Rick Jen dealt with the commercial power issue. We lost the commercial power out there. That lightning strike back fed into the transfer switch that kicked on the generator. That was damaged from the strike. Therefore...
Is it the tower that's...
Out on Briel Road. Yep. Power one, yeah, our main tower. The lightning strike prohibited the generators and backup systems to be triggered, so therefore we lost power. That's when we realized that we were without radio communication. Calling Rick Jen in, he said we had more damage than just the electrical system. I called him my radio vendor, through their investigation, found out that we lost some of our communication equipment that talks between tower to tower. I received a quote from Radio North, who is our vendor, who did provide the work there several years ago, we linked those four towers together. We lost a voting piece of equipment, and I don't want to go too technical into this, but we lost a piece of voting equipment that has the... That allows the four towers to talk to each other. We lost several links that would provide communication from tower to tower. The total that I received from a bill was $26,500 on just the radio equipment alone.
There goes the deductible.
Yes. Yes. You know, it is something that I believe we can offset through MMRMA. I would like to have a further conversation with Rick Jen to see if we need to tie into the electrical, if there's some damage there that could also be added to that insurance coverage. So, I bring that to you guys with bad news that we've lost some communication equipment up there. The only thing that saved us as far as being able to talk now through the radio console is we have taken the fourth tower system out of our system, the links that were damaged. And we basically plugged in the old tower system, the way we were operating about three years ago. That system worked for us.
Okay. Now, we're going to pay a thousand to duck, but it would seem you should have it, Mike, in your budget to cover the burden.
I do have the money available in the budget. Before we get down to the brass tacks, I believe that could fall under buildings and grounds as well. It was an electrical issue, electrical service that didn't fire. I don't know, we've talked, and I don't mean throw it... We've talked several times throughout several years of sharing the responsibility of that tower five ways. Other equipment is damaged out there. E-journey is down. Their tech wasn't available to start their E-journey rebuild process till today. So, I know there's quite a few citizens that are out there that aren't doing internet services. We've been out on wheat shelters.
If we can share that cost, I am all for that. We invest, you know, we build City Glaplin and EMS and so forth for proportional shares of the...
Exactly.
But obviously, on the table, we don't have that fluid... We just don't have the money anywhere in our budgets. So, obviously, we prefer that if it's legal, we know it's... But we prefer it being paid from 911.
Yeah. 911 funds has allowable and disallowable expense. An allowable expense is the power infrastructure when it relates to the direct service of 911. If some of those other systems, like Dollarize, internet service and that kind of stuff, does not contribute anything to the delivery of 911, then we get into an audit situation where we're using 911 type of funds to help our peers. I don't want to get into an audit issue.
Neither do I. But are we...
I think what we'll have to do is we'll have to get with Rick Jen.
Yeah. And I do need to have a further conversation and see if there's additional power that needs to be put in.
But the damage, that's substantial. We didn't realize it was that much.
I did not either until I opened the bill and realized that the pieces that they are talking about are... It makes the system work.
Was this after what, 2:30, it's a Sunday night, or Monday?
No, it was actually Sunday during the day. Daytime hours. I got a call around 12:30, 1 o'clock PM. It's our tower's down.
When will they start on this?
I'm looking for... I knew we were going to come here today and talk about this. I have to basically sign, or have you sign for the customer authorization to have the parts start ordering and that kind of stuff, so I guess I can...
And obviously, we don't want to overlook any...
I also have a... The same company is bringing a tower climber. That climber is going to now get off the ground, climb up to see if there's any damage above ground. This was a on-the-ground estimate of stuff that's in the little shed house there. They're going to climb that thing and realize there are freight connections and stuff up there. This may grow. Unfortunately, it may fall back on the insurance claim.
So, at this point, you're... You got $36,000?
I'm sitting at $26,500 right now, just for the communication aspect of...
And that is going to go up, is it going to go down? Not from what we...
I don't... Nope. These are... This is to replace the equipment that's in there that is bad.
That's an included climber.
So, today, you should have... Maybe start that claim...
I should at least get a signature, send that up there. So, I'm going to need this equipment regardless how we pay for that, one way or the other type of thing.
I'm talking about with MMRMA. She needs to open that ASAP form.
Yep. I'm good with that. And this is a replacement... This is a replacement of that equipment. This is not a refurbish. This is not a let's just change out some of the burnt parts and whatnot. I've got it explained to me. It's kind of like taking a baseball bat to the head. Your vision may come back, but you may still talk things in your ears. You know, I mean, there's going to be additional problems down the road.
If 911 is affected, I mean, Dial-Rad is affected, then they should be able to pay part of what our expenses are too.
Of course. We have reached an ask five-way split of all maintenance, all runs, keeping all up like that. And I don't think this would fit under that. So, we are holding guard word that when things do happen, we're spreading the responsibility.
Okay. If we have to, we'll get rid of it later on.
I'm paying the deductible I'm talking, not the cost of equipment.
No, no, I understand. But that deductible, because we don't really have that line item available.
Well, the problem is, we have a lot of vendors on this tower. They shouldn't... Can't pay for all of them. Someone's going to have to...
Correct.
I think that's until we talk to you later.
Yeah. Mike said that I could pull it right in on that. I don't know if you guys still have buildings and grounds news or that kind of stuff.
We haven't had one in months. We haven't had a recent one.
Sure.
In other words, this is the first time we've had any problem with the towers in over a year or so.
Put it on Gaddy, Rick, and then gather you up and have that everybody conversation. Perfect. That's it on the tower. I do have a couple of things I'll wait for my turn.
Okay. Look, we've got to go over the major financial statements, so once you hear this, we'll put you back.
Zivex, which is the furniture that I have over in the 911 center, the furniture there. I have lost a lift apparatus on that is in one of the leg systems. I do not have a maintenance agreement with them. About a six-year-old piece. I had a maintenance agreement for the first couple of years and realized it was just kind of lost weight, it was just kind of money we were just pushing aside that we have a claim done. So, we dropped the maintenance contract. We've lost the lift mechanism in there. I do have a bill now for $2,000. That can be covered through 911 funds.
Right. But that's...
What was the maintenance contract?
$2,600.
I understand.
Sure. And I've been basically $2,600 away every year, just paying them and not getting any maintenance serving up and growth. So, we decided two years ago to stop the maintenance, kind of to save us $5,000 in the last two years.
Your timing was...
Yeah. Twenty-three... You know, to spend $2,000 now instead of spending $5,000 then, I'd save some money if you look at it that way.
So, you'll have that request?
I'll have that request replaced in a line item to come up with.
Do you have copies of those?
I can get you copies. You can print them before I walk over to you.
If you'll do that for me.
I was... I'd like to interrupt, but I was supposed to meet at 9:00. I have to be at 61 and Center Fire Trail at 10 o'clock. I mean, I just... I have two quick little things, if you mind if I jump in front of you. I just had... I just wanted to get approval to change our gas company out of the shelter. Farrell Gas gave us their price of $2.16, while Crystal Flash came over and first fill is $1.64 and then lock it in at $1.81. So, we're $0.30 something, $0.40 a gallon.
They're going to have to go and change tanks for you?
Yep. But there is no charge for any of that stuff. Everything's free. They had seen our stuff in the paper.
Who do we have, Brian, to pull it? Crystal Flash?
We have Farrell Gas right now.
Farrell now.
And Crystal Flash had seemed to add to paper, you know, with us needing help in that. So, he came over and said that he could beat their price and got us up a quote.
And he's going to lock it in at...
Yep. Lock it in at $1.81, but the first fill is going to be at $1.64.
Ken, is there any way that Farrell can leave their tank where it is and then just hook up the cup tubing to the other tank so that in case... In other words, in case things change in the markets, that you would go back to Farrell and so forth?
Oh, no. No, just pull their tank.
Their charter doesn't lease on that.
Yeah. We're leasing the tank, so...
Oh, they are chartering?
That's what they normally do, yeah. So, they'll pull their tank and then they'll put it in...
Well, the reason I'm asking is I've got Z-Man for... I've got two propane tanks, and they don't charge me a lease though.
I think in the process of next year, a couple of years, we'll look at buying our own tank.
Yeah.
In fact, Fred Athie sells them down on Town Hill Road at a pretty good number. You can get a... I'll get a price from him.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure it's okay if I swing... I mean, he's going to save us a decent amount of money out there.
It seems to me that if you're saving money, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
If he just gives the letter, we'll...
Do you have copies of that for me, Anthony?
I can make copies. I just... These are just the ones that they gave me.
Can you bring it back to Seth, no?
Yeah, I can. And then I just wanted to note, too, that Jim had resigned out there for his cleaning on her weekends. She's been a weekend cleaner. Crystal's been doing it, so I'm trying to... In the process of trying to find somebody else to do it. Crystal did it all last month. It's hard to find somebody to work for... Work out there and find somebody that's... I can trust.
Definitely, we got to...
But that's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, Mike.
The only... The last thing I have is more of a discussion. Laura, did you... You had a conversation last week on the total bill. We'll find out.
I know about it.
Why I haven't received the AT&amp;T bill.
Oh.
With the...
I don't. I think it's just coming to us from Bob because we get it faxed to us. So, I think that's it. We just get it and know that that's what it is, and we just pay it.
And so, we're paying that.
We're just paying it, yes.
Okay. Okay. Do we know that... Do you sell them?
Oh, yeah. It's astronomical. Nothing's happening.
I haven't seen the bill for the last couple of weeks.
No.
Do we know where that's standing? That's my question.
Your guess is as good as mine. I have not heard a thing.
Should I...
We're referring to the $30,000 bill with AT&amp;T that started out at $18,000 and just continues to grow. It's just sits in the corner until it festers up, and we need to do something with it, and nothing's happening.
What correspondence we've had from Doug?
Yeah, we... This is... This goes back almost three years.
It goes back far.
Yeah. We're hearing about it. It goes back to when we heard it, and we had that meeting.
And Fry maintains that they... That we don't owe it, and Jacobson has communicated with AT&amp;T, but it's...
I guess until we get a notice or a letter or something or something...
Well, that's my concern. Each month, I would agree. The only reason that has come over the 911 thing is because my fax machine line is the last AT&amp;T staying line in these three buildings. So, they pushed all those over and charged us over onto me. They threatened me with shut-off notices and all that kind of stuff. We weren't paying that. That's when we turned it over to Jacobson and the lawyers. For the last several months, I have not received that bill. However, the bill's being paid, so that's great. It's being paid out of the right line item. But I was watching that each week, each month, as it comes in, just to see where we stand there. And so, I had a question with the mail service. I had a question with Laura, who is this bill? And I'm not seeing it, but it's being paid. We soon phoned through Bob Fry's office and being paid that's on... I've watched those monthly service charges back about $500 every month. I'm being paid, and that has grown by at least $10,000, $12,000 since I...
Correct. And obviously, if it weren't that kind of a number, we could all have a nice hearty laugh right now at the...
But you're still using that phone line?
I'm still using that phone line, but I haven't seen... I haven't seen a bill from them in the last three months. I just...
Is there any way you can opt out of it? Is there any other carrier that...
In talking with Bob Fry, that's the fax line, modem line in this new CMC Calcom, right? I should say new CMC Calcom. He started talking Chinese. I don't know if they offer that data line connection through them. There was a reliability issue, all that. So, under Bob's advice, we did nothing with that AT&amp;T.
I think, from recollection, is that we had to leave one line on there until our three-year contract or whatever had expired. We should be well expired by now to where we could drop that line and move it to CDCs.
Can we take it to broadband, or...
It's a telephone line.
It's just a plain D phone line.
It's a traditional hardline fax line.
It's a two component. It's a fax line, but it's also a data line because when my system needs to switch over to the sister piece at the employer, it's that same line that's being fed through the data now goes through the... So, it's a little more than just a $30 telephone line.
Yeah. Fax line, yeah. Those are... That's not the problem. It's the data line, the data feed.
And I know the governor's doing away with all these hardlines, so I don't know what... And like some of your alarm systems, I don't know how they're going to...
And AT&amp;T knows this. I mean, they know it's a data line. They know it, but it's something that we rely on. They got us all there.
It should be no different than the data line slash fax line that I have in my office that communicates our core system with Claire's core system. It should be no different than that.
I would believe there's an alternative there, yes.
And that one's on the CMC.
We weighed on Bob's side for days, and he said, "No, we're not going to change it." So, I mean, and he was doing all the phone with CMC Calcom.
We'll discuss that and that and see where that's at.
When Bob Fry leaves, what is the plan for the phone system? Who's going to take him over to the county building phone system? Because we had this issue last week with the answering service and all that. These three buildings were down. We scrambled around, and we called Bob Fry. I kind of took it upon myself, I said, "Call Bob Fry direct. We're not going through the IT right. Shame on me if that's the thing." But it was a phone issue, and Bob needs to be on ASAP. So, I'll take the heat if that thing's... But when Bob leaves, who are we calling when we have big phone issues here?
Well, we're not going to leave in the vacuum. Mike, we're going to... In other words, we're not certain whether it's going to be IT right that picks it up or whether we need to retain another IT service of some kind. Remember that one guy I've been talking to that works for Steve Cusson at the radio station? In other words, there are people after all those skills that maybe we can create a solution by thinking outside the box, you know, which can we use this guy six hours a week and this guy eight hours a week?
I like that. I do want to make sure that it's on a grid graph because when that phone system went down last week, when every... We couldn't make any outside calls. Every outside call, we got a Spanish or Iraqi-speaking service and whatnot. And, you know, that might be okay business hour-wise, but 24/7 agency, we couldn't call out.
So we need to research that a little bit.
Yeah.
And your other IT vendor that you use has nothing to do with phone service?
No, nothing.
It's strictly the, the software and the hardware, the tele, networking, networking and, uh...
I think we need to research that a little bit.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we, this is what they get you. We'll discuss that separately.
Okay, did you want, you wanna cover this?
No, we're gonna do that. We'll do it in the next, that's the main thing right now. We'll discuss that in the regular. She's gonna leave.
Okay.
Cherry?
Yeah. I wanted to, uh...
And I don't wanna, excuse me, Mr. Prosecutor, are we holding you up for anything or...
Not at all.
Okay.
You guys, I just have a rare slow day, so I thought I'd touch them.
Okay. Appreciate it. I didn't know if you had something important that we needed to...
I don't.
You were just bored, so you thought you'd come in to be your time?
I wasn't bored.
Cherry, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base with you before the meeting next week and make sure that we were ready to make a decision on the ballot proposal for MSU extension. And, um, get you updated as to where we're at with that. Providing you with the updated language. And as I was looking at it, I had another question. From, I've been communicating with Christie and she's had a chance to look at it and provide some input to me, which was really good. And there's two, what you're looking at is two different options. So that's kinda what I wanna talk with you about today. And, um, basically, I simplified a language quite a bit. I took out the part that talked about the, um, the capture from the DDAs. Because it was felt that that's just really confusing. And Christie researched the ballot proposals in the past and the county, and those weren't included. So unless the attorney feels that they have to be in there, we thought it would be best if we just remove it. The two different versions that you have in front of you is, are related to the question that Laura brought up at the last meeting. On when the county will be able to bill for the amount. And jumping in here, Kristy.
What's that?
The bottom one.
So...
It still doesn't address that, does it?
You don't need, uh, January one and December thirty-first. And if you go with the first one, you will not be able to levy it on the two thousand fourteen December tax bill.
Gotcha, all right.
On the first, on the first option at the top. On the second one, you can remove the January first and the December thirty-first. That leaves those years for five and you can levy it on the December first tax bill if it's passed.
Do what?
On the first one you have, if you leave the wording the way it is, you will not be able to levy that on your December first bill.
And on the second one, you think removing January?
January first and December thirty-first.
And just put two thousand fourteen through two thousand eighteen?
Yep, through two thousand eighteen inclusive. And that would be the five years. It would go on the bills in December of this year.
I, I think that is very clean, Christie doing it that way.
Just limit it to January?
Press up January one and December thirty-one, and then the top question would be completely off the table.
And then the other question that I just had thought of, Kristy, is, um, we give the amount raised, the approximate amount raised in that first year. But I haven't taken out the amount of the capture.
Right, you don't.
Okay.
That will generate that amount of money. It's just the cities will keep their portion under that.
But this amount will not go for MSU extension?
Right. You're not gonna get a hundred and two thousand. You're probably gonna get closer to eighty-eight.
A hundred and one?
Hundred and one?
What were you saying?
Did you figure the captures?
Yeah.
Okay.
You think, I, I might have had my decimal...
I didn't even look at them. I didn't even look at them.
I want you to look at that with me if you were.
Plus there's other exemptions that will come off of that.
Because I, I'll need to have that final budget to, I thought I had it. But if I got my decimal place in the wrong spot, that's kinda important to look at. Just so that you are not blindsided Tuesday at our meeting. I brought this up and was instructed by my Buckeye ownership meeting to not approve having this on the ballot. They were adamant. They did not want this on the ballot again, okay? And so I will tell you if I represent them. And so Tuesday, I am going to vote no to put this on the ballot, and I want you to know why. And I want you to know that in advance. So you know... Well, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. I, I feel that voters should be able to make the decision on this. And that's the only way that we're going to get all of the voters instead of... Well, there were, there were a lot of people at that meeting. And they, every one of them at that meeting and then the board themselves said no. And I represent them, okay? So I don't, I, I don't want to do this to vote no on, on Tuesday without you knowing in advance. So that's the advance notice. You represent your voters? Yes, I do, yeah.
The other question I had is that, um, for clarification, I, I don't think we really went over that. August, what, the thirty-first?
Well, it's a date. August...
I don't remember what it was.
Our hundred and twenty-day letter we sent you may the, the seventh. And is Debbie's compensation going, was included that you could cover that till the end of the year?
No, we did go over that and that will be the county's responsibility.
But we can't do it.
So you will not pay the, MSU will not pay?
No, I don't have funds to do that. I'm using all my available funds to get us through the end of August or the beginning of September. You've only given us funds at this point to get us through March, I believe. Remember in the budget?
March.
Yeah. The budget that was approved for two thousand and fourteen only had funds to get us through March something. You made your first hundred and twenty-day notice in December. I transferred or asked to transfer the twenty thousand dollars that was in that Project Fresh account into our account to help get us to the end of August.
Okay, that's first up with that. I thought we, we restored the funding through August.
I'm not aware of any...
I'm not aware of the twenty thousand. That's...
I didn't transfer any.
Yeah.
So I'm not aware of anything like that. I, I, not read anything in the minutes or, or been included in any meetings that stated that Project Fresh funds were gonna be transferred.
That, yeah, I can't remember what meeting that was at, but we talked about that and I can give you those. I thought that that went through.
The hundred and twenty-day notice was done in May, on the seventh.
That was the seventh one. The original one was done in December.
Right, but we reversed it.
And then you reversed that.
And then we resented after the, uh, the, uh, defeat of the...
Yeah.
Uh, in, in May.
And I think I counted the hundred and twenty days from that May date and it took us to about the seventh...
Seventh of August.
Is it the seventh of August? No, it's September. I can't remember the, anyway, I counted the dates. I have it written down somewhere.
So what were you, you will just lay your staff on or what? What's gonna happen if we don't have the funding?
I, yeah, we'll have to do that. If you don't have funding to carry her over.
When you say through the end of the year, are you talking through the end of the state's year, which is September thirtieth, or are you talking?
The calendar year.
Calendar year, okay. So the state will pick up?
Yeah.
The program itself through December thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
The university. Not the state. We're not state employees. I wanted to be clear.
Thank you.
Because that was, you made that comment at a meeting. We are not state employees. We're university employees.
Okay.
Okay, I need to clarify that again.
Yeah, we need also to confirm what, uh, Cherry said about the, uh, the amount of funding that we sent. You said since April. What was your, the month? You said we hadn't sent any support since April. You made the number.
What was your question?
I understood that our funding, let's start from getting that. I understood that when we read, we withdrew the hundred and twenty-day letter that we were funding you through August, that we had an agreement that that would carry you through August then.
Yeah. I thought that that was because I had instructed the, I had a fund called, it's called Project Fresh account, I believe. I'll define it in here. And I had nineteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand some dollars, and I asked for that to be transferred or to be used. I don't know if it has to be transferred, but to be used to help fund us over until...
But it didn't happen as of June?
That's your two eighty-seven fund and there's twenty-one thousand, nine, eight, seventy-eight in there as of today.
Okay. So we can use that money. You should've been receiving some bills recently from...
We did. We did. First and second quarter, those were paid.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So we're good through June thirty, what, uh, yet?
We've been billed through June thirty, yes.
So we may have more money than what we think we do, which might be able to carry the secretary.
What I would suggest with this, since Christie and I are gonna be working on the semi-annual budget amendments through end of June, is that maybe we wanna work out what we'll, first of all, figure the date of the hundred and twenty day.
Right.
And then work up the appropriate budget, what we have, what we need, and then bring that back at the next meeting when we do the budget amendments. And let you guys make a decision from there. Because I think right now we're carrying a lot of different figures, but we have to look at the big piece yet. So I think that's fair next finance, that we look at that departmental budget and see exactly how far we can push that to.
Yes, especially in as much as she's, she would have to be officially notified that, when, you know, fixed it, uh, if that's, you come to fact.
If that's even a, a factor, yeah.
We might be able to keep her for a while, until the end of the year, at which time it, uh, notice, if the ballot passes, then we'll be okay.
Cherry, this morning, we've been under the impression that it was, we were okay until twelve thirty-one. And then it was brought up about the possibility of Debbie's comp, that she, that maybe Tom Coon didn't mean that it was covering her, just the, the other, other parts of the, of the budget. And that's why we're trying to clarify that.
I understand that, right. Debbie is your employee, which is in this budget, but it has nothing to do with our ability to carry her over.
So that's the, yeah, that's an answer, yeah. But, yeah, we had, we had not put it in perspective, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Sheriff's here.
So we'll look at that and, uh, talk to you in the next minute.
Did you, did you have to turn Jacobson, look at this language? And I, I agree that the question mark should be a period. You don't, you don't question mark a proposal.
Okay. I was using, um, language from two other counties in the area. I asked on Elkhorn and there was a question mark in there, so I tapped it in there since it was a question.
So I guess we'll meet when you explain it.
Well, what about, am I gonna be on the agenda next Tuesday for this?
Do you think you need to be?
I need this approved by the board to go on to the November ballot.
We're, we've, we've got more time, uh, this year.
It's, what's, what's the date we have?
What's the cutoff for November?
It's July, twenty-ninth, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-fourth, that is what you said.
Yeah, I think this meeting is the one that you're gonna have to...
Have to know it next Tuesday, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing that I wanted to do is, once this gets passed, if it gets passed, is I want to, um, I need to have a meeting with community members to help work. We definitely started working on this. We're gonna develop a funds of extension group. And I'd like them to be present and, um, heard at the figure.
So that's another reason why I'd like it taken care of.
Right. That, all of those reasons were pretty well clarified on our last meeting.
So we'll see you Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, did you have anything to add to, uh, Mike kind of filled us in on the tower?
Other than the opportunity to thank you, um, other than, obviously, we're gonna have some kind of an insurance claim, which I spoke to you on the telephone about. In addition to that, because there are other, uh, groups of people on there, I think, when it comes to a deductible, since you're holding the insurance on through MMRA. When there's a deductible, let's face it, some of those things directly affect their capabilities. For instance, the electrical there. So I don't think any of those folks would be opposed to paying it because without your tower or our tower, however you'd like to phrase that, they wouldn't have the communication that they have. And it's going to be, as far as I know, we still have a thousand-dollar deductible through MMRA.
Well, the other ones, with the other ones, though, it's kinda hard to, when you provide a service to them and they're leasing or renting them, to charge them for taking and having some damage. That's the only...
I don't...
And through, through a normal process, the funds that they're paying are for ongoing upkeep of that facility. Not necessarily something on, outside the box like these lightning strikes, these act of gods, if you will. Everybody's taking care of it because we're talking about snow removal, ongoing electrical maintenance and those kind of things and their capability of having that on the tower. The only reason I stress this to the board is simply this, at some point or another, that re-tabling will become an issue and that kind of thing to keep that tower there. And then it's a situation, well, we don't pay for that. It's really your tower. You take care of that. You're gonna be on the hook. It'll be your dime or our dime to keep those upgrades going. And it's not, we're really not talking about that much money anyways, based on the entities, and they need the power out there. Without you supplying that power or you redoing that power, um, that, that they can transmit from their own building. It's, it's just one of those things. I know it's, I don't...
We've had the same thing. Have, have, have we had the, when the one cooling system or the, uh, one generator, uh, didn't we, didn't they share the cost of that? The other users?
You know, I don't remember that specifically.
That, that came through data and yes, they did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, some of these things that are unforeseen circumstances, like these lightning strikes, we're doing the best job we can and we're just doing a cost share. You're not making any money on these. I'm not suggesting that you start banking money based on these other entities. What I'm saying is if they, they have the privilege of having things on your tower or our tower, that we just cost share on these unforeseen circumstances. If they, if they don't, I'm sure there's a bunch of other folks that'll be happy to pay you, uh, to have that four hundred and forty-foot tower, I think it is, uh, at least four hundred. They'd be happy to share some of that space. It's the only one I'm glad of. So you kinda got the only game in town.
Right. Mike, um, when they come up and do, they're gonna do like a survey on that. They need to make sure we have adequate grounding system that we got on that. There's, you know, I know they're gonna take hits, but...
Here, here's what, here's what the issue is. The radio equipment that's out there has been grounded and has suppressors and that did not take the hit. It's the communication equipment going from tower to tower. There is some lightning suppression out there and that was inside of that bubble. It's an act of God. It got inside that halo and whatnot. But some of those other things, some of those entities are not lightning suppressed, which to me is acting no more than just a beacon. We have a four hundred-foot needle in the air. It comes down, hits that building. It's gonna get spread through their system.
So some of their equipment is causing our problems?
Yeah, to think, well, it's their equipment, not ours. But you're introducing a, a large vault into that building and, and nothing at that point is, is protected. You've just now invited the wolves in your door.
It, it would seem to me, I mean, logic, all right? Our insurance is going to do the repair work, correct? What we're asking is please help us pay the deductible. And, and so if we ask and they say, no, we won't give you any, then are we any further out than if we haven't asked? Because I, it would seem to me that two hundred, two hundred bucks people that are using it would be willing to help us pay that and we would pay our share of the two hundred dollars. I mean, we have to ask.
There are repercussions that we can put on them if need be. That's, that system out there is protected with a battery backup for uninterrupted service and it's also protected by a generator that should fire within five seconds of an interruption of commercial power. They're plugging their equipment into that uninterrupted service, which is fantastic for them.
Right.
There are plugs out there that are not put on the uninterrupted service and whatnot. They don't wanna comply to, to, to help paying for the system. They get plugged into a plug that does not get through when lightning, or when, when commercial power goes down, they're down.
So I, I just, I think we're just asked.
Yeah.
The, let me make certain I got all the, we got nine-one-one, of course, uh, on there and EMS and E-Journey.
No, no, no EMS. You have nine-one-one. You have county road, uh, transit, county transit. You have E-Journey. Road Commission.
Commission, there we go.
County Transit.
County Transit.
Dollar Ride, Dollar Ride One, County Tr, County, uh, Road, Road Commission Two, nine-one-one.
And who's the fifth?
E-Journey. And the fifth one is, is Sheriff's Department.
Okay, nine-one-one, E-Journey, the Road Commission, the, uh, County Transit and the Sheriff.
Sheriff's Department.
And we're looking, we need a thousand dollars to...
And since nine-one-one's here, are you willing to spend two hundred dollars?
I was kinda hoping it's gonna be a thousand.
I, I am willing to spend four hundred because nine-one-one and the Sheriff's Department are joined at the hip. It's the same radio system. We just, they just hold one license. I hold the other. So four hundred from, from the county is what I'm looking at.
So then we just need to contact the Transit and E-Journey and the Road Commission.
Mike, what, what agreement did we have with the Fire Department?
There is no, there is no agreement with the Fire Department. The, the Fire North frequency that's out there is the licenses held by the Sheriff's Department. At one time, that was a Sheriff Department-owned license that we turned over to a fire frequency, but not, uh, not fire-owned. So that's, that's the Sheriff's Department-owned frequency.
Would that, would it be feasible to take and maybe charge them a hundred dollars a year just for taking maintenance wise or... It's something to think about.
Something to think about, something we can talk, uh, later now. That, that frequency that we use is the paging system we page out to the Fire Department. It's more or less our communication channel to them, not necessarily their channel back to us. They have other frequencies that they speak to us through nine-one-one, so that's a, it's a conversation we can have, but, you know...
Does, does EMS go through you then to, uh, nine-one-one systems? They don't have, no, they're not involved in this.
No, 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 their towers are all, uh, they have equipment on some of the county towers, but not on...
Not on that particular tower.
Okay.
Anything else?
Something with this?
Something we missed?
That's the sound out of command, I can't... I still, we have a committee decision, we have enough money to really get some, or let you handle that.
Any other comments? Mr. Jacobson, do we have any? Okay. Anything else?
Do you have got this, this on these wires?
Everybody got it, too.
Do we give?
Put it on the table, make sure you're true.
One of the things that may have been mentioned earlier was the five thousand dollars that we needed for the jamming system. Um, we've kinda went over everything that we have, I don't know where we realized that money from. The only thing that we came up with across the street, because we're trying, we're under-revenue, and some of our line items were over-revenue, and like, out, out county inmate housing, or at least we will be by the end of the year, but I hate to count on those things. Uh, the only thing that I can, uh, come up with after me and Ray and Matt sat down, uh, across the street, is one of our senior deputies, uh, the one that I spoke of last time to the board, is leaving, and when that replacement takes place, he'll go out as a senior deputy, and a new one will come in at a new pay grade, so there will be, uh, obviously, a pay difference from now until the end of the year. Uh, and I, I haven't done the math on that, I'd have to get with the clerk to see what the exact dollars those are. But my hopes are, is that would be part of that five thousand dollars, the lion's share of it anyhow. So that's where we're at with the five thousand dollar fix.
We're gonna be around for a few minutes, and then we'll discuss it, I hear.
Yeah. I'm good, thank you.
Anything else?
As something totally separate, at this time, should we congratulate the sheriff on having an extremely good-looking young lady who was elected as Ms. Beaverton?
We should congratulate him on marrying a beautiful mother.
Most of those things are accurate. Thank you.
Is there, anyone entertaining the motion to adjourn?
So I will.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.